Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Evangelista.
To approve the March twenty fifth. Meeting minutes with any amendments.
And second amendment.
Motion's made and second motion made by Tilly, seconded by, by Bob to.
Go, Eric, go, go, go. Time to waste, my brother.
Tick, tick, to approve the minutes of.
Thank you.
March twenty fifth with the amendments that we may make. And, uh, Tilly, do you have any changes? I saw a couple of.
Yeah, I, I, did you get some, uh, changes? Did you get my changes?
No.
I, as soon as I saw it on the computer that day, was it Monday?
Oh, boy.
I answered you.
Okay.
All right, you didn't get it.
Sort of remember?
All right, I had a some amendments.
You're out of, it's only three pages, it's not too bad.
I know, but.
And we have all nine.
Cool at that, huh? Maybe, maybe, maybe next week we could, we could take a look at these minutes.
Would you prefer to wait? I mean, are there extensive things that need to be changed?
No, it was just, uh, let me find it now if I can, uh, come across it, somewhere around the vote. We were talking about, uh, oh, yeah, here it is. On the, uh, oh, the, the pages aren't numbered.
Yeah, we don't have line numbers on these.
I know, Mary Ellen.
Okay.
Three.
Okay.
Four. Five, six, seventh page of the.
Page two of the minutes.
Oh, okay, here's the second one.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Um.
Is there like a heading or something?
Usually documents and other exhibits used.
We usually have line numbers on these so that we can just, oh, you have line numbers?
Well, he told me, so I did, just did this today, so I was, so I can get it in right there.
Perfect.
Uploading onto the virtual town hall, I think.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Wicked awesome.
Super.
Beautiful.
Little head.
Okay, so kind of like in the middle there, we're Article thirty-three, we were talking about the use schedule by law. I thought I had said more than I don't understand it. I said that I didn't, I didn't agree with the process and I didn't understand it. That's what I was objecting to. I wasn't objecting to anything else but the process.
I thought you were saying I don't understand why the, the select board was submitting it.
Right, and that's the process in my mind.
Right.
Yeah, it was initially.
Because it, this had started out as a citizen's petition.
That's right.
I get that.
So either you put that all in there or you just say that I just don't understand the process.
I don't under, is everybody good with, I don't understand why the selectmen are bringing this forward?
Yeah.
I don't understand why the selectmen are bringing this forward?
And that was my reason for, uh, and I abstained too. I didn't vote for that, I abstained.
Yeah, it says, Tilly Evangelista abstained.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Rob Hoover.
That's it.
The record shows that Rob Hoover arrives at, uh, seven twelve. And Rob, just so you know, we're going over the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Keep going. Tilly, uh, you have anything else?
No, that's, everything else is good.
Tim, how about you? You good with everything?
On that same page, the public hearing, this is under, um, first public hearing down at the bottom, the public hearing was opened at seventy-eight P M. I don't think that's true.
No, it was probably seven eighteen P M.
Twenty-eight or something, seven, something else.
The public hearing was opened at seven twenty-eight or seven eighteen? Does anybody have a, can you confirm the time and fix it?
I actually think it's more like seven twenty.
Twenty-eight, seven twenty-eight, that sounds about right.
Sure, because we did a couple other.
Yeah, I think it was seven twenty-eight. I, I'm good with seven twenty-eight. Is everybody else good with seven twenty-eight? Um, where it says the public hearing was opened at seventy-eight P M?
I thought it was seventy-eight R P M, but I'm an old man.
Didn't I commit it like seven twenty or something?
Did, is that when you arrived?
I think that's what it said in the minutes.
Tim Howard arrived at seven seventeen.
Yeah, so obviously the meeting started before that.
Okay.
Oh, it was this, uh, public, this first public hearing.
Just the public hearing.
Yeah, that, it was actually the second public hearing of the evening. It was the.
It was recorded at seventy-eight R P M. Presumably, but we don't know what that means in terms of time.
Can we vote?
Um, for what?
Did we finish voting on this, the minutes?
Oh, um, I, I thought I saw one other thing, if, if, if you have it.
Please, you're the boss.
Where, where we have, uh, up at that, the top of that page, meeting motions, public hearings, action summary discussions, um, continuation. The motion was to open the continuation of the hearing for seventy West Main Street approval. It wasn't to open the public hearing, it was to open the continuation of the hearing. And that's, that's all I saw.
I'm good.
You good?
I'm good.
Rob, did you have any, any corrections to be made on them?
Thank you.
Um, all in favor of, uh, accepting the minutes, approving the minutes as, as amended, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All abstaining, motion, let the record show that the motion carries unanimously. And I'm going to turn this over to you, sir.
Thank you, Harry.
Rock and roll.
I apologize to everybody for running late to the office. I can't believe it's snowing out here. What's up with that?
Yeah, somebody forgot to tell Mother Nature that it's April.
Anything with correspondence you want to talk about?
No, nothing of note under correspondence.
So we have, uh, on our agenda, we have, uh, an empty slate for vouchers, an empty slate for public hearings, an empty slate for new business. And we have any other concerns of a planning board member or member of the public, uh, as the next item up. If anybody has anything they wanted to briefly discuss, and then the last item was the planning office and turning leaf that we would talk about. I had three quick items I just wanted to put on the table, but I'll go after everybody else. I, I would, I would like to, um, ask the board if they would, uh, be interested in, in agreeing to ask Howard to, um, just check in with, uh, with Peter Durkey and get an update, um, on the Elm Street project. It's a big project and I don't have a clue where it's at.
Oh, a little stormwater and the resurfacing and everything there?
The whole redo of it.
We, we appropriated like a, I don't know, a million or something, two, two years ago, in the annual town meeting?
Something like that.
Yeah.
So it was just, just, uh, just the board requesting Howard to, to.
Sure, something a planning board should know about, right?
To ask him for an update on, on what that project is, and I know he's real busy, um, but if he, uh.
He can send me an update, an email is fine.
Okay, um, this is just to remind everybody, um, that, uh, we had talked about with the spot, the restaurant downtown, that there's some, a couple of trees that are gonna go in out front, and it's another item, um, that we were gonna, that, that, that Howard was gonna coordinate with Peter, um, to make sure that the tree pits were gonna be, uh, cleared out appropriately, the right size to get these things to grow accordingly. So that was the second item, and then, um, the last item was also trying to coordinate the big picture and just talking with Park and Rec to find out, you know, where they're at with what they have in the plate. Um, I have no idea, um, and if.
The ground is starting to clear and things.
Yeah, and just, I'm just curious as to where, what, where they're, where they're going, what their plans are for the future, and it's kind of like the Elm Street project. It's just an attempt to try to start to get information from some of the other boards, so, um, so that would be something that if everybody was.
I, I can't do that for you, but as, as, as a member of the CPC.
Yep.
I, I can tell you that, um, a lot of the projects that they deal with naturally, you, you need money to do them.
Right.
Um, and coming up on the warrant, uh, on May fourth, uh, annual town meeting, um, several CPC projects that, uh, directly relate to Park and Rec, Active Rec, um, one of them is, uh, an upgrade at, uh, what's called Phase Three of the upgrades at American Legion Park. Purchase of more, uh, playground equipment, uh, there's also, um, uh, repair of the bandstand and, uh, the H P accessible bathrooms down there. There's, um, exterior work that needs to be done on the, um, on the building itself. Okay. Those need to be repaired. Uh, CPC voted to appropriate, and I don't remember the number, I'm sorry, I don't have that with me either. But there's a certain amount of money that was appro, that was recommended to be appropriated for American Legion Park. With respect to, um, the East Main Street recreational facility, um, the, um, it's my understanding from talking to Jimmy and, and some of the other Park and Rec members that the, um, Phase One of that project went out to bid. It came back much higher than the amount of money, unfortunately, that was still sitting in the, uh, in the coffers for that project because there was, um, a great deal of extra engineering that went into it. And, um, so it fell slightly short of, um, what was, uh, what was anticipated and what was estimated.
Do you know if they competed it?
Absolutely, there were four bids, uh, the highest one was, uh, over a million.
Do you know what Phase One was?
Uh, it, I couldn't tell you exactly what it was. I can tell you that, uh, it was to bring the road in, and there were certain other elements. It was to do a portion of the parking, I believe, and, um, uh, the field, all the field and sodding, uh, not sodding, but planning of the field, leveling of the field. I don't believe it dealt with the, um.
Skate park.
The skate park at all, and I don't believe it dealt with the dog park. Uh, I believe, needless to say, regardless of what that Phase One bid was.
Yeah.
That could not be awarded because there was not adequate funding. None of the pits came in the right. So what happened was, um, uh, they went back, they trimmed a few things off of the, that, uh, scope, rebid it, and my understanding is, um, that bid comes back, I think it's, I wanna say next week. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent certain where it might be, yeah, the fifteenth, comes back on the fifteenth.
Okay.
All right.
Um, so, uh, again, scaled back somewhat. In addition to that, uh, Park and Rec has requested, um, more completion funds so that they can do, uh, more work down there, uh, with the idea being that by the time town meeting occurs and the money comes in, uh, they could, again, put out the rest, another bid for another phase of this and just do continuous, ongoing phases. It's gonna take a while.
It's more expensive when you break it down to phases.
It, it is, but, um.
Takes longer.
To get all of the money upfront means that you have to bond, and if you bond, well, you're negating that ex, that extra expense with interest. And, uh, I, I honestly don't believe that, um, I'm not speaking for the CPC, I am the chair, but I'm not gonna speak for them when I say that, uh, I don't believe that there is any more, um, appetite for bonding. One of the, uh, one of the appropriations that will be asking, uh, the town meeting voters, uh, at, at this upcoming town meeting is over two hundred thousand dollars to pay, uh, interest and, and, um, monies to, to service the bond for the, um, for the high school.
Turf field.
Field, for the turf field upgrade. We bonded over a million dollars for that, as well as, um, a conservation restriction on, uh, Wheeler Book Farm. We took that to bond using CPA money.
Right.
I, I don't believe the appetite is there to, to do this.
Okay, are there, um, and again, this is just, are there any, um, future, uh, discussions that, that, that Park and Rec, or should we?
Last night, we, um, we also discussed, uh, in CPC, what we discussed was, uh, the purchase of two, uh, open space parcels. These are open space active recreational parcels, uh, for Park and Rec, intended to be for Park and Rec, they always have been intended for that. Uh, I know people get very confused these days about what open space means, but, uh, under CPA and under the state, open space means both conservation land and active recreational land. There is no distinction made in state.
However, did I interject?
Course you can.
When it comes to the conservation, that State Department, their open space is passive recreation.
Mm-hmm.
That's all, I just wanted to clarify that.
Uh, absolutely, absolutely.
With the D E P.
It's like walking trails and.
Passive recreation.
Water, uh, skiing, you know, um.
Cross-country skiing, snowshoeing, nutball bars.
I do wanna point out that E O E E A, that handles the open space for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Under their auspices is parks, conservation land, all natural lands, and wetlands.
They changed that.
Absolutely, it was all combined into one, so now open space is.
As far as the conservation.
Has a much wider definition. So as, as this isn't on the agenda, and all I was doing was, is looking for Park and Rec and to, and to get, um, them to come here and talk, so. No, 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 I appreciate, I appreciate you throwing in all this stuff.
But I can tell you about those two, uh.
You have those two, and then you have.
Map sixteen, Lot Six, and map sixteen, Lot Seven, um, of the Georgetown Assessor's map.
The E R S.
They're both, uh, currently under purchase and sale, with the, the, uh, purchase and sales have been signed by the landowners, uh, submitted and, uh, reviewed by Town Council and submitted to the Board of Selectmen for signatures. You'd have to talk to the selectmen about whether those are signed now, if they did that last night, I don't know.
Okay.
And, um, those two parcels are immediately adjacent to what we refer to as Parcel F from the Turning Leaf subdivision. Uh, they also, but another active recreational parcel called sixteen dash four, and, um, they are all part of what the open space, open space and recreation plan of two thousand five and the latest open space and recreation plan of two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, because it's taken three years to get to this point now, um, uh, identify as the Greenway, the recreational Greenway.
So that's what the, that's what these go, these are part of that.
These are part of that Greenway, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I'll send you PowerPoint, you'll see all of it if you want. Send me an email, I'll pass it to you.
Okay, well, thanks, thanks for the, um, for the update on that, um.
He's the chair, I'm sucking up.
Okay, great.
You're just the clerk, what do I get?
Um, did anybody else have anything they wanted to add for, for public discussion?
Yes, you were going to explain, I think, about the legal ad, how did that? How come the legal ad was different printed than what we voted on at the last, uh, planning board meeting?
Yeah, well, um, you voted not on the legal ad, but you voted for the date of the meeting.
We voted, I have it with me, I brought it with me, this is what we voted on. Intensity of you schedule. Okay.
Yeah, I, I, but you didn't vote on the article, you voted on the planning board date.
Put this in the legal ad.
To create a legal notice. I believe that my motion was to have Howard, um, post the legal notice for, um, April fourteenth at two, seven fifteen, yeah.
And I did.
It was just, it was to po, it was to post the, the, the notice.
The legal notice, that has to be posted for any.
Right.
Public hearing.
Right.
For a warrant article.
Right, which is our job.
I believe we're required to do so when the, when the selectmen request.
Requested, so, I'm gonna jump in here, see if this helps any, but, so, even if this were to change, however it's written when it comes from the selectmen, at this point in time, that's not our purview of what we're approving. What we're approving is just the mechanism to get it out there on the, uh, as a public hearing to be noticed.
Or not even approving anything.
When I saw the legal ad, it, it had more than this in it. It had another whole section.
Yeah, the, the, the legal ad said about, uh.
Supplemental, it had another number and another section and, and it was twice as long.
There was a section A there.
And that, that section of the legal ad was paragraph A of the apartment's bylaw, and that was discussed at the meeting.
I don't recall that.
We never discussed it.
No, I mentioned that the apartment, it was just mentioned to me that day.
Oh, okay.
By the building inspector.
Okay.
That if these footnotes were to be removed, there would also need to be section A out of the apartment bylaw.
Yeah, but I remember you saying that, okay, I, I don't remember discussing it, but.
I don't think we got into much of a discussion about it. I do, I do, I, I remember him talking about it, and I, I think it does go to sort of a side energy of the whole thing, which is just the process by which this has happened is, is, is a little, um, it's, it's a little different, um.
It's a lot.
Well, it's compressed, I think it's compressed, and when this kind of thing happens, um.
We would not be allowed.
A paragraph can change, and I mean.
We wouldn't be allowed to do that, let's put it that way.
I don't know.
But the legal ad does, does discuss.
I don't know.
Those amendments to the footnotes as well as removal of, of the paragraph, so.
Well, well, we just approved the minutes and there was nothing in it about it, what you're saying. We never heard that. And, and I don't know, you both were there.
I think, I think you're saying it was mentioned.
It, it was mentioned, but we didn't, I, I.
There wasn't a discussion.
I said, I, we didn't discuss it.
Well, if, if that was so, what you're, what you're saying, why didn't you, why didn't you type this up so that we could see it?
Type it up where, Tilly?
The legal ad. Why didn't you show us, if there was an additional part to this, why wasn't it included in here? And if you had plans.
I didn't write that.
I know, but if you had plans to add something.
Tilly, what is it you want, want me to admit?
What's the problem here?
The problem is that I had voted for this, and when I saw it in the ad, it was something else.
But you didn't vote for that.
And I, I think that's, I think that's where, I think that's where.
That's where I'm at.
But I think that's where, I think that's where the disconnect is, Tilly. I, I think what you may be thinking you voted for was the wording of this.
She abstained, she didn't even vote on it.
Because I didn't want to, want to, because of the profit.
Let me just, let me just stay on, let me just stay on, so I, I think, I think, I think what you thought you were voting and you felt uncomfortable, whatever, what, what you cast an abst, abstain vote on was you were thinking the words and the way it was written, when in reality what we were voting on, which I did know was pretty clear in the end, was not how this thing was worded, but was simply getting it out there in the schedule of a public notice. That's all we were doing. We were fulfilling what we are, are required to do as a planning board, which is our job, to put that, because it's a bylaw thing.
And having to hold the public hearing.
Exactly.
To hold the public hearing. Tilly, that, that could say everybody in Georgetown has to paint their front door blue.
No.
And it doesn't matter, we still have to bring it, we still have to hold the public hearing.
Then we can get in to comment about it during the public hearings, but this was not that point that.
It said, yeah, I mean, the minute it said, uh, Harry made a motion to authorize the town planner to schedule a public hearing. That was, that was the motion.
And what did, is there anything quoted from, uh, Howard saying what it was? As you're, you seem to think that it was.
Howard was merely telling us, but.
He was notifying us.
The opinions that he had heard, right, was about, that it would have to change, not just that one small part of the bylaw, but.
Well, I'd have to look at the meeting supplement too, because I thought I may have included in the meeting supplement. Do you have the meeting supplement from the last meeting here?
I might, I'm not sure.
This is, this was the supplement, correct? With the schedule on it?
Doesn't really matter.
Can you talk about that?
It really doesn't.
Yeah, you, you, you basically have the, um.
What he said.
The, the expansion and the, the, how the, uh, the, the schedule would have to go.
Right.
And, um, some minutes from, it looks like the, uh, what is that, two thousand, uh, nineteen seventy-three minutes? Seventy-three or seventy-nine?
So I may have just orally reported in about the building.
You said you'd only heard about it that day, or.
Right, the building inspector had informed you that afternoon.
And this memo came out on the twenty-fourth. This is, this is a memo from the town administrator.
But that's irrelevant to, we just voted to have that meeting in the time frame.
For the public hearing.
I, I brought it up for another reason. When I watched the selectmen's meeting, they too had found this supplemental after their vote, the previous meeting, and then, uh, after this, this was sent to us, the next meeting they had, they voted again so that the entire legal ad was voted on and supported by the Board of Selectmen. And it led me to believe that's probably what we should do too.
Were they voting the legal ad, Tilly, or were they voting the wording for the warrant article?
They were voting to include the supplemental section of the amendment.
On the warrant. On the warrant.
Yeah, for the wa, warrant.
Right, so that it could be voted on at town meeting.
But this is, obviously, if this came from Mike Farrell, and it did.
And it wasn't complete.
It wasn't complete.
Big surprise. We'll have to probably bring that up.
But when. Big surprise.
That's why I'm saying there's two whole issues here.
So, so, uh.
But I don't think there's an issue.
When, when the public hearing comes up, as Bob was just saying, that's when, um, we would hear from outside and, um, also from.
Discuss, yeah, discuss what the warrant article is to be, and what it means.
We take public comment. And probably, um, give the Board of Selectmen our recommendation.
Or not.
Or not.
Or not, but we must give report.
Correct.
We may or may not give recommendations, but we must give a report.
Correct.
I thought we just had to have the meeting.
No, we have to give a report.
We do have to give them a report.
If we don't give a report.
The report can be nice public hearing.
Ironically enough, if we fail to give that report, that can't be voted at the town meeting.
Oh, this is, this was a real nice public hearing.
If we fail to give report.
Okay, so I think, um, I don't think there is, um, anything else on the agenda.
Oh, I, I have to say one more thing.
Okay.
Uh, I've been busy looking at how we can accommodate, um, the provision, uh, for older homes, those built in the eighteen hundreds, because it's true, it's very expensive to upkeep, and.
Insulate to modernize.
And if they're, you know, people wanna sell it and they want to, uh, you know, and someone wants to come along and fix it up, that to accommodate the requirements from the zoning board, what, what I thought we could do, and I've thought a lot about this, trying to figure it out, and I called the historical, the state and everything, and he told me a couple of, of communities that do what I had thought of, which was, um, to allow exceptions if the s, uh, structure is in, built in the eighteen hundreds, to accommodate for apartments beyond the density that exists today. So what, what I would think, and this is a draft, there probably still needs to be some polish to it, but what I was thinking of is the applicant would have to come to the, uh, Board of Health and get the okay of how many bedrooms they could have on the, on the lot, and attach that to the application for the zoning board to review, and the Historical Commission could, could make the determination that yes or no, this structure is historically significant in architecture or history, or whatever, however they phrase that. And that would be a consideration that instead of worrying about, uh, meeting the requirements for a variance approval, a special permit would be able to be, uh, made. It would be up to the discretion of the special permitting authority. And I think that would accommodate the issue that we have in town. We have a lot of these old buildings, and everyone wants to save them, and everybody's interested in, that's the character of Georgetown. So I think that could be a way that we could, you know, change that bylaws so that it could be easily approved.
Uh, wi, without diving too deeply into details, what is the problem that this solves?
Well, right now, uh, if you read the supplemental that you have in your book, if you look that over, um, the restriction is, uh, ten thousand square feet per bedroom, per, excuse me, per apartment.
I see, and you're, you're talking about making smaller.
The ten thousand, and as you go into different, uh, districts, the residential C and the R B, it goes up based on the size of those lots, but it starts at ten thousand per unit. It's, it's tough to do more than that based on, we've got it pretty well written, it's pretty, pretty ironclad, that the zoning board would have to do a variance, and it's not easy to do. But if you put it as a special permit, and it's based on the requirements of, of, uh, with your approval, how many, uh, bedrooms you could have, I think that would be a way of.
I, I think I understand.
Approving it.
Tilly, are you saying create a, a, a brand new, like an overlay district, a historic overlay or something, that, that would allow for a special permit?
Not that far, overlay. In other words, there's houses all over the, the town.
So you'd need a bylaw for a special permit?
To me, this is a discussion having a lot to do with the public hearing that the board's gonna be having next Tuesday.
Well, I can't, I can't discuss that because it's not the bylaw that's on the table now. This is something in the works, maybe in the fall.
You're talking about a different agenda item for putting on our list of bylaws to look at?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I would like to do.
Okay.
I only have until May to do it.
The other, if I may, the other option that doesn't require a bylaw change is a 40B, a friendly 40B. An application for a friendly 40B where the Zoning Board of Appeals could waive any of the local zoning that they choose to under 40B.
No, the state, so it's a thing.
I would, as one board member, I'm not comfortable introducing a new idea to try to scramble to get into this May.
It'd be a year from now.
No, no, it would be the fall. You could probably get it up.
Well, we know we'd never get it on the May deadline.
No, the May deadline is over.
The select board would never do that for us.
I was, I was just wondering, just wondering.
But right, the 40B that you're suggesting, the applicant would have to meet the affordable housing provision, and all the zoning is removed for 40Bs. I wouldn't be in favor of that way. I think, but if we can come up with something that would make it worthy of the zoning board to approve by a special permit, it would be a much smoother process.
And I think that there's a lot of conversation to be had about this. If we start to dive down into it now, the ballgame will be over.
It does take, to do what I just told you took a lot of research. It's not, it's not a knee-jerk thing.
Exactly, and I don't think it's something that we should dive into tonight, but if that can go into the sleuths.
Agenda item that would have to get scheduled.
Yeah. I mean, it's not forgotten about because we've forgotten a lot of bylaws that we wanted to do.
That's a whole duty.
Well, yeah, send anybody else, and make sure it gets on the agenda.
Yeah.
Because you said you have a draft.
I'll email you what I have, and you don't have to answer me back. Just look it over and see what I got so far.
You know the, you know the Excel spreadsheet or whatever it is that we're keeping track of?
The To-Do List.
Can you please add this for 2016?
Yeah.
Fiscal year 2016.
How about the fall, 2015?
Fiscal year 2016.
No, I think you'll forget about it.
In July.
Okay.
Do we want to discuss this?
Thank you.
No, or this email from-
I distributed to the board in a supplemental, the email I received from the town administrator. He was forwarding me a finding from legal counsel regarding the disposition of Parcel F on the warrant as being decided that it would fall under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission.
That's the conclusion.
I believe that's what the select board wrote into the warrant article.
Okay.
Really, I didn't read that in here.
Yeah, it's not in here.
So, that is what it is?
This was just more ambiguity.
Yeah.
There was nothing, no new opinion, no, no, nothing.
This was what the select board based their decision on.
Yeah. Sad.
Did they think of-
Good for the recycled-
My understanding, I was told to me last night at the CPC meeting that Monday evening, the Board of Selectmen voted to put, to put on the warrant the disposition of Parcel F as conservation land.
Was that a vote for you too?
I don't know the entire, I don't know the details of the vote. I don't know who was there at the meeting or who wasn't. I don't know who made the motion, whom-
Okay, well, it is what it is.
Absolutely. If there are any, I don't know if that could be changed from the floor.
Pretty much anything can be.
Yeah, I think anything can. I mean, that's the whole public.
Sounds like a hairy floor move.
A hairy floor move or a harry floor move?
Hairy.
Pretty hairy, pretty, pretty hairy.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Fortunately, all the other parcels are open. If there's open space, you just define it for them. Now you're saying there's one space, the piece that really blocks it all in is going to be passive space.
Yes, yes, passive Conservation Commission controlled and-
Basically closed.
Which would negate any reason to buy, spend any more money on anything in that alley. Kind of end of story.
And on that note, end of story.
On that note, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. What is it?
Oh, please.
What time?
Find the words.
What is it? What time?
It's about 17 minutes.
7:43 PM. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
The meeting.
It's been motioned and seconded to adjourn the meeting, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's all downhill from here.
Here, Andrea.
This is the shortest meeting you're-